I did. We'll reconvene our meeting.
There it is. Okay. Good morning. My name's Leanne Wright and I serve as Executive Director for the Community Foundation in Plaski County. And I thank you for making time for us this morning. More importantly, thank you for your service to the county. In prior years, the county has supported the Community Foundation with a financial gift through the budget process. These gifts have enabled the Community Foundation to increase its grant making, provide programming, and enhance the quality of life for all in Plaski County. And because of you, we have been able to study housing needs, consider broadband infrastructure, address the childcare desert in our community, and build our nonprofit sector capacity, and so much more. This year, I respectfully am declining to make a request. Why? Because all of us need to do more with less, particularly this coming year. I know that changes in the legislation have disproportionately impacted Plaski County's budget. And that means there are less funds to address the critical needs of our community, let alone plan for prosperity and capacity building. That is why I'm requesting that no gift be made to the Community Foundation this year. The one small request I will make is that you consider us in future years. The Community Foundation proudly stands ready to serve our community. And we hope that you see us not only as a philanthropic leader of Plaski County, but as an understanding and willing partner in ensuring the future of Plaski County is one where all feel proud to say they love where they live. And again, I am both as an Executive Director and as a resident deeply grateful for your service to the county. Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate, you know, not requesting anything. Every little bit helps. I think we've shown this in the past, going on in the future. I know myself, I'm here to do whatever we can to help support the needy.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And while you have a little friendly Community Foundation face, do you have any other questions?
I have something coming up in the near future. Want to tell us about it? I know there, I have an email.
We have, we have a couple things. On September 10th, we have a, we're fondly calling it Naptime Economics. Let's do the math. It is a lunch and learn with Mark Chamberlain with CAP Trust to talk about childcare needs in the community. That'll be at Francis Fields Meadow Springs. All are welcome. You just need to register online. September 11th is also our annual celebration. I hope that everybody received the save the date. The celebration will have the doors open at 5:00 PM and will be held at the Madera Ville Volunteer Fire Department. And then October 23rd, we will be hosting our nonprofit convening to review the nonprofit snapshot survey that went out and kind of take a holistic look at our nonprofit sector and what the Community Foundation can better do to serve those needs. I'm sure there's some, I'm sure I'm missing something else.
Day of Giving.
Day of Giving, yes. Giving Tuesday. Giving Tuesday will be December 2nd, I think that's Tuesday, which is the first Tuesday after Thanksgiving. That is a day of giving where we celebrate the generosity. It's a global movement. And gifts to unrestricted funds at the Community Foundation will be matched two to one through the Gift Aid Initiative with the Lilly Endowment. And we are about 81% of the way to our goal at the moment, and we have about 50,000 left to raise. So I'm confident that the generous folks of Plaski County will help us get to the finish line.
I have one more question. I have one more question. So we're looking at your budget, and I really do not ask for anything. That's the budget cycle. There is one thing for a contractor. Oh, this is fun to ask for.
Okay.
Thanks for everything you do. Ever since, you need to open your eyes. I did speak to Ann the other day. Taught me something. Buddy in this room, a lot of negatives. Talk about the asset. How'd you say that?
Looking at things through an asset-based lens. What's good here? We have a lot of good things. We could spend a lot of time talking about what we lack, but honestly, we have so many good things happening. I prefer to look at what's already here and build on that.
We don't have a Walmart.
We don't need a Walmart. We got small business. We've got, we've got so much here to offer, so. Hashtag love where you live. I'm trying to create a movement, guys. Thank you. Thank you for your time and service.
Eleven. What's that building? Better this room. Terrible.
We're ready. Have a seat.
Bathroom.
Didn't Lynn be working instead of watching the meeting? Yeah, shout out. Ready.
Okay, well, my budget is pretty unexciting.
You like unexciting?
I did, the part I'm helped was 2,256. I did lower it to 500 because we just helped use it very much. And then the service and maintenance, WTH, I had no idea what that was for. And I didn't open it to the Mary. And it hasn't been used for years or anything like this, so we just knocked that, just knocked it down and see. Yeah, everything, and, you know, not either, but the sheriff, if he sees a room, this budget, this is budgeted for everybody's ability to use. So, yeah, it's good to keep it that way. Yep. And then that I split it 5% for myself and my first deputy, and that's it.
No.
Thank you.
I just. No, it's, yes, it is. No, it's. It's, it looks like one of these. Not with a number on the top.
It'd be 062.
I did. Here.
Or it should be 002.
Now we know who's. I don't think it's anyone. So we will.
I don't.
Election board. County board. Is IT, IT's under the, but we have a separate one at 11:45 for IT. Someone come and talk to us? Guys, I found this thing on our. We can talk? Okay. So when I find a paper, I just need to find yours? Okay. Lisa, do you have more than one thing?
Yes, I have.
Okay, hold, okay, hold on. Did it all break? Okay, wait, 1181. And then what? Okay. Well, I'm gonna pull it out regardless. What was the number? 1191? Okay, is that it? I did. Daley's rental? Okay. Is that, is that all for you? Okay. Okay, cool. Thank you. I, I'm good to lunch. I did. That's what, I don't know, I'm, all my papers are, all my papers are together.
Yes. Oh, it's 0012.
The highlight part in the. Auditor. Oh.
What are the, what are the ones for the, for the IT? 002? 0068? Yeah, but, uh, 068 is, I'm sure. Yeah, but IT is under, in a different. Yeah, there's a few missing. So then you pulled it out, in there.
Hey, is our next meeting, our six? Eleven?
For recess. Oh, wait. Have a.
They say it's under 0. Take the, for the soil and water, the terminology secretary, post change, something like office administrator or something like that. I know when Nikki was in here last year, they requested change. Secretaries consider not the politically correct terminology anymore. Yes, exactly, so. Yes, but, I mean, I, I do on their, on their defense of that, they, that is the only thing, only person in the county we call secretary anymore. Nobody else is. We had that discussion right before you come in, because I.
Take pen on your paper and write it off.
Yeah, I, I think last year there was actually a, like I said, I know there was a discussion in a board meeting, and I think it was moved to have that re-titled, so. Was it office administrator or something like that you said? Okay. It's, yeah, it's the only, only person that has.
Did you do 5% increase on your possible thing?
That's all. Somebody has some questions?
No, I'm good. Well, as long as we get that title changed, I'm good. Awesome.
A2.
Maintenance has a couple different ones, okay? Maintenance has a couple that they come out of, or is it just the one? Okay, I thought, I thought there was, I thought there was one for buildings.
Yeah, there is. There's two.
Two building or?
Building instruction, Q cap.
What's the number?
36400. No, it's Q cap, 1138.
That's the number we need.
Two buildings, what goes to the hospital.
That's the only one, Larry? 1138?
1138,000. 1,000.
It's 1138 and 161, right? Yeah. Okay. I thought, I thought I heard you say 1,000. I'm going, oh, how about? Your increase is worth 5%, right?
Yes.
It's on, looks like a nurse fund.
Commissioner, make that decision.
I know, I, I am.
I use it for air conditioner repairs or replacements, that type of stuff.
Guess we have to, are we gonna budget out of it?
Yes, there's $100,000 that goes in.
All right. We have, we have a, our, our, always, every year, it's, I have always the same format. We have, we have a, our, our, always, every year, it's been, don't have always the same format you have. Just trying to figure it out.
Okay.
You.
Yeah. Yeah, the account.
Normally using the bottom line on.
Right.
Thirty-six. Thirty-six, four hundred, yes. That's all I see.
He has all he had on that one.
Yes.
Okay, we're good.
Am I done?
Yep. All right, I met with Larry and he brought up. Takes more than.
No, he makes his name.
What was it?
Uh, longevity.
Doesn't, Larry doesn't get longevity. Well, according to Jenny Shank Maxwell, he does not, but salary maintenance.
Department heads don't get longevity increase.
The salary matrix has it as mine is blocked, his does not say that. Because he started as after Brad left, probably were probably. But regardless, then, you know, we're not appointed anymore, I think it'd be beneficial to give longevity if we want to retain our employees, just like the other people get. I think in twenty-two, uh, Don and Maurice, I'm sorry, Chuck and Maurice, they took away the appointment. But it was an old thing, I think Gary Krueger still gets appointed, I'm not sure. Yeah. And I definitely appreciate it if you guys look into it, if it's viable or not.
I think the only thing that says it is salary.
Yeah, it's just in the matrix, it's not, there's no ordinance or resolution or no state statute that says we can't.
It's just in the rules.
Right.
It was be.
I think.
I think it's just a big job.
I would be like, yes.
It wasn't in there when I started.
I can tell you.
I did.
Right.
And I didn't say that was.
I already been accused, so.
I can, I can explain it. Okay, so originally the matrix started in the sheriff's department, that's where the matrix began. Okay, and so when they did the matrix originally, you have to, when you have the matrix, you have to have a place where somebody stuck, you're basing your payoff of a department head, the highest person paid. And originally it was based off the sheriffs, but we don't dictate the sheriff's salary. So when you look at this sheriff's salary and it comes in from the state at X amount, it was too high to do a percentage off the sheriff's salary to base the rest of the matrix. So they use the chief deputy's pay instead of the sheriff's pay. So when you use. When you use the chief deputy's pay, that's your department head, so make it fair and equal across the board. Everybody that is a department head doesn't get longevity, because that's where the rate starts. That is correct, they don't. That's where, I mean, we just said that ten minutes ago, department heads don't get. Yeah, it's still that way.
And that's what I'm asking you guys to look into it and possibly changes, have longevity since they're not appointed.
Any, any elected. So like Teresa's the department head, Marcia's the department head, so you come into that place too, so there's the sketchy, I shouldn't say sketchy, but not equal, because you have elected officials and then you have people that are appointed by the commissioners. So it's hard to do longevity across the board when you have an elected official and you have appointed person. Because they have term limits, so they're never gonna get the longevity that somebody in Larry's position have. It's something we should consider and we can talk about it as well.
Irregardless of what the, what the outcome was, there was a, there was a method to the madness, because I was involved when all that happened. There was a method to the madness and Sheila's a hundred percent right, that's the reason it was done that way, but it's a living document and, you know, if we need, you know, just like we changed their wage adjustment to try and correct some, some inconsistencies there, I agree with, with Jeff, you know, you know, it's now something maybe we look at from a different, from a different directive and, and maybe there's another option, I'm not gonna say that there is, but, and I know me and Larry's had conversations in the past over, over this too, and we've tried to correct things, but there was, once again, there was a method to the madness, it wasn't trying, it wasn't done to try and hurt people or to hold them back, it was done to try and make, make the matrix, you know, a fair and equal document and give it some stability for increases and raising, so it all went up in the ladder instead of like it was before. I mean, before we had the matrix, everything was all over the place, you had no idea who was getting paid what, you know, everybody was paid individually, set by departments, and it, it was a mess, it really was, and, you know, but once again, there was a method to the madness. Not saying it works out perfect for everybody, but, you know, I'm willing to, you know, to listen and take it under advisement.
And I could understand that if I was appointed, now, like I say, since I'm not appointed, be treated like a regular E, titled.
But you're still considered the department head, I think that's the.
That's worth a kicker. If everybody's paying. Or wages higher than.
X.
Five percent. Second pay down.
Correct, since it's a percentage, yes.
That's why, that's why most of us prefer percentage over a flat raise, because it keeps that, that distance and, I say, the more you make, the more you get, hopefully incentivizes other people to up the ladder.
Actually, I'll, it's spreading further and further, is a percentage.
So I, um, was texting with Jenny, my payroll deputy, and she said that you and John are the same and he does not get longevity.
Correct, and I, I believe I said that, but his on the matrix.
It looks like he does.
Correct, mine has, I don't know, not denied, but it has something exempted or something which is, was not included on.
Yeah, I.
His matrix.
I would say that, yeah.
I mean, it's probably just typo, the.
Same standard should be in all places and it was missed in John's position.
In my position, looking at the matrix, he's having, hmm, that ain't right.
Right, I agree, it should be on everybody that falls under your category, yes. And that's something.
Do you have anything else? Which is what it. Those were, um, what do they call that, they, so whatever's left out of the twenty-four budget that we paid, had to carry over to cover the. Has been so far, been able to buy a couple rooftop units at the end of the year, saying I have it in my budget, so not having to come to the council and ask for additional to do that, uh, right now, I think we've got, out of the eleven units, six of them have been replaced in a cyclical manner, so. Yeah, no, it's typically a hundred thousand, it's what it's been since I started. And majority of the stuff that is done maintenance-wise, I do it myself, I don't farm it out. I'm capable. I mean, changing a rooftop, no. Since I started, we, uh, I talked with Chuck Mellon about it, I wanted to get a maintenance contract set up with J and K, they come in twice a year, go through all the units, get capacitors, stuff like that, which I do not have time to do. And first time they went through, they found three cracked heat exchangers that were still covered in the orange. But it's paid for itself.
Yeah, I, I guess kind of the cap on what Jeff said, and that's my, would be one of my big concerns with all the money that's been spent into the courthouse and stuff. Has anybody, or has there been any dialogue with you, like, looking at what, you know, what, what will be needed to maintain that courthouse and all, because I don't want to see it get in that same situation.
I'm gonna have a meeting coming up with Arctic Air, relation of all the mini splits and the air conditioning units, boilers, all that. I, J and K will be there well, because they will.
Like, I could see where you are going to need an increase now, because the courthouse, you know, before we didn't put no money into the courthouse, now we need to maintain where we are, and, you know, I, I live some of your dreams, so I know.
I mean, possibly next year, but this year, I think.
Okay.
Or, I'm sorry, this will be our, for next year.
Yeah, yeah, coming up in twenty twenty-seven, yeah.
I think if we talk about that when the commissioners are here too, make sure that they have a plan in place to maintain things, that might be something on our checklist to do.
I mean, honestly, if it does. If you guys decide to up it, I, I don't use it, it's gonna roll back in. I definitely don't want to go lower than. The only other thing I asked for on copier supplies, I asked for an increase of a thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, price of copy. Ink supply, ink, big issue, I talked with Jeff about, talked with Kenny about it as well. But a lot of offices buy their own printers, and I'm required to provide ink for them rather than use the Cardinal service being paid for. I know treasure had a special printer, which they have to have, certain departments do for.
You know, from a, from a fiscal side, we spend a lot of money trying to validate printers and use them and all. It does sound like a conversation that Larry are kind of slipping back to a lot of desktop printers, which defeats the whole purpose of paying service agreement, a fiscal responsibility, but commissioners have to manage, that's their responsibility, manage. So the only thing we can do is unfortunately hurt Larry by cutting the budget, doesn't help him any, puts more green. Hopefully the commissioner will, uh, maybe step in and.
I haven't, I haven't. I haven't talked to. Out of that nine thousand dollars, I'd say. Well, into five thousand. Some of them cartridges are like four. Prosecutor, they have free printers that they do, of course, they all have them on their desks. I don't know, maybe it'd be cheaper to lease another Cardinal printer. Fancy that, I have not brought this up to Don. Yes, no. Well, I think the problem lies that if they have any office supply in their budget, they can buy a printer, nobody sees it.
Well, and I know this is getting a little off course, but I was involved whenever we went to the, sent more centralized printers, and the reason we did that is everybody had office supplies, ever, once again, everybody was buying a printer from Walmart or, you know, Home Depot or wherever they went to, printers, they had all kinds of different inks, and, you know, and the cost per page to print on them printers is astronomical compared to these centralized printers. And once again, then either the departments have to manage, uh, uh, cartridges or, you know, you know, trying to have a centralized, uh, uh, office supply room, then they have to have a thousand different ones, the whole idea of it was to use the centralized printers, cartridges, because they were so much cheaper to use, and we weren't spending tens of thousands of dollars a little bit in this budget, a little bit there, that you don't manage track, don't realize how much it is until you add it all up. It was, it was astronomical savings, yes, it may not be as convenient as going like this, but the savings to the counties while we're here, you know. You know, once again, you know, there are certain printers in the county that we have to have, have no choice, because they are specialized printers, that's good, but, you know, the, I look at us, the Placite County Local Government Health Plan is, get out of your chair, walk, funny, grab the paper and walk back, hey, that's an exercise program.
And I'm, I fiddle with uh Teresa Anderson now there and myself, we've done a real silent system and we had somebody that requested special staples. Gave them staples brand that are two thirds of the price. One thing, buy your own. This is what we stopped. Said in a nicer way. See you.
That's what I understood, yeah.
But it looks like some money's.
But it's service. Did we use that for? J and K for their. Their maintenance contract?
Yeah, they just got put in as WTH.
So it's not really WTH. It's actually maintenance. But also can um. Being previous treasurer, that office does need all those printers because you get to, it being crazy in May, all them people are coming in and, and it'll be nicer once. Everybody's back together in the courthouse, but, and I know those printers and I know they cost the ink and that, but unfortunately, if you're trying to grab. Everybody's receipts and you get somebody like God rest his soul Carl Smith or um, you know, some of those big taxpayers. And you got somebody else next to you doing receipts as well, you're gonna end up with issues, so. We did, and we got those given to us by um, by Lau when we switched to their system back years ago.
Right, like I said, I know there's some, some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some circumstances, so it's not easy to say across the board, but it.
Right, yeah, the treasurer's department is not an issue.
Yeah, but I think in a lot of places it has gotten up.
Well, it's a commission.
Yeah, exactly.
Mention.
Thanks, Larry.
All right, thank you, guys. Good luck. Ready.
Hi, everybody.
Hello, hello.
Ready.
Okay, um, for the most part. The clerk budget, the OOOO one budget um didn't change a whole lot other than the. Percentage increase for payroll line items and then of course Becky's payroll line item. Um, envelopes went up just a little bit because the cost of printing is up so much. Travel went up, um, so did schools meetings and seminars. I don't know if you guys realize it, but clerks are required to go to about eight conferences a year. And um, sometimes I run short on my schools meetings and seminars and travel budget. And then I think dues and subscriptions went up as well because I know for the clerks association, um. Our dues are one percent of our annual salary. But it's capped, so. And then we pay dues to the Indiana Voter Registration Association. So does anybody have any questions about the clerk's budget?
Do you have any questions? No.
Are we good? So the election board, um, of course, next year is a midterm election and we've put the money back in for um, all three election board members. And then all the, the line items that were zero this year because we didn't have an election have been increased for next year. For poll worker pay and the absentee voters and the early voter poll workers and um. The. Of course, the meals. And that went up a little bit because I feel like I never have enough money for the meals, but, so yeah, the election board um. Budget increased quite a bit because of the election in twenty twenty-six. And I do have a breakdown for all the, the poll workers, the early voting poll workers, uh, the election day. The judges, the, the inspectors and the clerks and the runners, the mechanics, the canvas board. I have all that broken down. If anybody wants to see it, if you want me to email it to you or. Leave it with you or whatever.
A beauty.
Yes, that's, I was nodding my head. You couldn't see me when Brad was talking about it. It's the same thing. It's still called WTH, but it pays uh micro vote their annual costs.
So it's not actually WTH, it's micro vote.
Yeah, mine is, yes, mine's micro vote, but back when they combined all of the tech services um under the. Like, it was kind of under the commissioner's umbrella, but they called it all and on the individual line items, they all labeled it WTH. But it's not. Mine is more for micro vote, which would give me two micro vote line items. But one is for the annual maintenance, which is under WTH, and the other one is for like um, the, the services that we're gonna need next year because it is an election year. So they come, they program our machines, they get them all set up. And our micro vote representative is going to be onsite when we actually move the machines over to the courthouse. So they'll all be sealed, they'll all be checked, everything will be done. Very transparently when we actually move the voting equipment over to the new courthouse, so.
Okay, last year you came in with stipend. Talk to you out of this year. Next year.
The stipend is offered to clerks on the years that a general election is held and it is to cover like the travel costs that. On, when there's early voting, I come in at six thirty or seven in the morning and then I open up early voting. I have, there's a whole series of numbers I have to go through. From the day before, that all has to be balanced out in um, two different sections and of, of software in the computer and then. On the machines themselves, so there's a lot of, of prep work to, that goes into uh getting things ready for early voting to start. So I come in six thirty or seven. Open up early voting. I'm running all day when the poll workers need things, which now includes. Since every voting machine is now required to have a VV pad on it, I know we've talked about VV pads ad nauseam. Um, when those VV pads run out of paper, that's up to Becky and I to go and change them, which is gonna be so much better having it there at the courthouse. I can't wait, but. We have to drop everything we're doing. We have to switch the, the VV pad paper out or um, when you go to vote at the poll pad, they scan your license at the poll pad. There's a little receipt kind of that prints out. When that paper goes out, we have to replace all that too, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of footwork that goes with. Early voting and I usually don't leave until five thirty or six every day during early voting. And then on election day, I'm in my office at three thirty in the morning and I'm there. I don't leave. I'm there until. All the final numbers are calculated and everything's inputted in the statewide voter registration system and that can be anywhere from eight thirty PM to eleven PM. I've been there till midnight before. Um, but that's what that stipend is supposed to cover.
How much is the stipend?
It's up, according to the Indiana code, it's up to twenty-five hundred dollars.
And. Midterm considered a general election?
It will be in November, yes. It's not a presidential, it's a midterm, but there's.
But you can get a stipend for a midterm or a general election.
Every year that there's a general election held, so basically the even numbered years. Um, some communities still have their municipal elections on their own. We're pretty lucky because everybody but Monterey has gone to the Polaski County election cycle, so it's all absorbed in the clerk. It's not done by the municipalities except for Monterey and they hold their own town convention. I would appreciate that.
Any other questions?
You didn't add that stipend in where, on this budget. I was looking at.
I don't think we did.
I know, I think last.
Yeah, I wouldn't have asked for it last year.
Yeah, yeah, I know you wouldn't have last year because it was in about the middle of the year or whatever, whatever it came, came to be, correct? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the Indiana Election Division loves to drop stuff like that on us at the last minute, like all the CFA ones that we had to do this past year, so. But if anybody does have any questions about anything, you all know how to get ahold of me. I think you've all got my cell phone number, you have my office number. And you are absolutely welcome to call me or stop in anytime. Nope. I don't, we didn't, no, no, there's still an outstanding invoice that they keep trying to send us and I keep telling them, we're not paying this until the project is done and now it looks like it's not gonna get done until we're back in the courthouse, so. It was. Well, no, we paid out of the perpetuation fund already. The rest of it was supposed to come out of the commissioner's budget or the.
Eighty-nine fifty, the American Rescue.
Yes.
Yes, and I haven't paid anything out of that for that because, yeah, I just keep in contact with Yoda.
Balance?
Uh, I'm, I'm not anymore. I ran a, um. I ran a report, but I don't, I don't think I brought it with me.
Like, I ran a report as of Monday and um, it looks like her balance. Like about forty-three thousand.
Which I completely understand the fact that, that since Becky's pay was being paid out of that for services rendered, we cannot put money back into that perpetuation fund. I understand that, right, Teresa?
Say that again.
We can't reimburse that fund with any money from the general fund.
No.
Because it was for payroll. Right, okay, and I understand that. Thanks.
Oh, one more question, Joe.
Yeah.
Um, talking about the, the bill for your copian or your scanning fees. Do you think you'll have it paid or you think they'll have it done by the end of twenty-six? Because that's where the ARPA stops. Is we have to have everything paid out by the end of twenty-six.
Okay, that's, that's a good motivator.
Yeah.
That's a great motivator. That's good to know. Do you have? We don't have any idea.
Yes, yes, it's in there.
So the issue's twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay, again, if you guys have any questions, you know how to get ahold of me.
Thanks, Ellen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. My size Joe, but they always forget about you over there. You're a quiet one. The real, the real backbone of the office, correct? Yeah.
So I had um, John Kegarice from Recycling Transfer Station text me and um, he has done something to his knee. Um, he's not sure what. I think it's the knee that he was in that major accident last year and was laid up for forever. And um, so um, he was asking me if he needed to schedule or can he call in and I told him he could call in if he needed to. Um, I told him also if maybe his um, uh deputy, I guess deputy Tom could maybe come in. Or if he would be to present it and he hasn't gotten back with me, but um, he was asking, would you rather him reschedule for tomorrow? I mean, it's hard telling what's gonna happen with this. He's in a lot of pain.
I think we can look it over and if we have a question, we can. You know, give a quick shout on the phone or whatever, something that important, I mean, you know. For me, that one. It's not like we're making motions and passing days.
Hey, with that mic.
Auditor, just a few. And we, we gave the auditor stipend.
They gave it to me this year, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But not tomorrow. They were asking it for, were asking it like retroactive.
Right. Right, yeah. Yeah, but that's what I thought it started.
Can I get?
And the, and the auditor, you get yours every year. Yours is not.
Yes, because.
It doesn't have nothing to do with election. Yours is every year, hers was every, basically every other year because of election.
I know. No, it's on the big printer. We don't, we only have just the two printers in our office. One that they do checks on because of the, the security of that and then the big one that we have. Yeah.
No, and I, I think in general, most people. Do use the big ones. I just know, you know, like say. Just one of them things that, how do I want to say? If you go. Don't, if you don't, don't keep the conversation in front of people sometimes. Start to slide back and, you know, it's. And yes, I agree, the managing of them, managing of, you know, of everything is, is the commissioner, but unfortunately. You know, it's the council's job to fund things. Only control and real power we have is if people aren't. Following the rules or doing what needs to be and if, let's just say, use the commissioner as an example, let's say they don't want to manage it because. They're not comfortable. The only control, control we have is to cut the budget and squeeze them. You know, that's, that's our, that's our power, you know, that's our super manpower, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it had to, it would have been back when, when Jerry and Kenny were commissioners, so yeah, it'd be about.
Hi there. You can have a seat up there if you'd like.
All right, can you set it the other way? I don't know if that mic.
That mic, yeah.
Doesn't matter, I can speak loud enough.
Okay, we're good with that. The public doesn't like it, but.
Okay.
So would use it.
Live.
It'd be nicer, it's uh, it'd be in broadcast, state law.
If you just slide the mic there down to your.
This one here?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Yeah. Brian. Okay, we're ready.
If you could just go over what you did on.
Okay.
And maybe introduce yourself. I know this is a new position.
I am Roy Mullis. I'm the Veteran Service Officer for Plasky County. In reviewing the 2026 budget, I reduced postage from one hundred and twenty-five to a hundred dollars. I did that simply because we are doing things more electronically now, but we don't need that high of a postage budget. I suspect as we go more and more electronic or paperless, it will continue to reduce in the years further out. VA training, of course, we went, I increased that from four fifty to five hundred. As we do more VA training, you know, down in Indianapolis, the cost of hotels, travel, the stuff has increased, so I needed a slight increase in that budget. Printing and advertising, they had ninety, excuse me, ninety-four, I went up to a hundred and twenty. I'm printing more brochures and stuff out there in order to get veterans that we have in the community to recognize the VA office and to bring their two-fourteens and things like that, not necessarily for them or for their spouses or their children that might need them in the future. We currently have about anywhere from six hundred to eight hundred veterans in the system on file. I've only got four hundred and ninety-two. There's that delta out there that we have not been able to capture and have not made a visit to the VA office. Software upgrades, as we continue with, you know, things becoming more electronic, I'm going to need software upgrades. We bought and had to have replaced the scanner, the older scanner would not work with the updated computer system because one was operating on an Office Seven's Windows systems. Now with the Office 2010, it would not, was not compatible, so we had to buy a new scanner. Office equipment, I left it alone at eight fifty, but I made the comment, we need to upgrade. As we continue down electronic, I may need to upgrade the amount of space I have IT related as I may be getting close to the window where I'm going to max out my bandwidth. It's not necessarily that I want to replace a chair, it's that I may have to upgrade my bandwidth in order to meet the current needs or the future needs of the office. Questions?
Do I have any questions?
Go.
Thank you, you're done. Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, thank you.
I think something's wrong with them. Are they all home? When I call? The day? Okay. But did ring earlier? You want to try and. No, I get you. Okay, and then I put, and then I put an order. I mess Natalie. Okay, thank you, sorry. Bye.
I thought, I thought, I thought we, and maybe it's been cut, I don't remember. I thought we left, I thought when we did away with IT, I thought, at what point did we, did we disperse the money out? I thought for a long time we left, we left the money in an IT line item. Not just matrix, there was a line item in the budget that, you know, we left the IT, basically the IT budget together because we had always been talking about, well, hire somebody back, then don't have to. Predevelop it. Yeah, but I, I thought they're used to, like you said, I mean, I can't remember when we broke it up in.
I don't know. Yeah, I could do it tomorrow. That's not a problem. Yeah, that's fine.
Basically, talked to Willie. Talked to him, talked to him together.
Careful. Contract with.
Yep.
With for lunch. Be convenient later. Subway. Not Burger King, Plasky County.